Call the meeting to order. And I'll begin by reading our official. Statement that meetings normally held at the municipal offices are being held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access and where required, public participation required in accordance with the governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Meetings are typically broadcast on frontier community access television, I imagine. If I'm supposed to say got it, yes, it's okay, I'm here. Everybody got it. And I imagine that's happening tonight, and if anyone needs the remote meeting connection ID and passcode, they can find it at. Deerfield MA dot Deerfield MA dot US, is that it Alex? At the, at the town, yeah, right, agenda, uh, the town website. Um, so the meeting is called to order with a reminder to planning board. Members that we have our own internal guidelines to speak one at a time. Recognized by the chair, we want to follow the Deerfield code of conduct by being respectful, considerate, courteous. And also it's good to be concise and non repetitive, just for the fun of it. Board members in attendance Denise Mason?
Here.
Andrea Leibson? Somewhere, I know Andrew's here and. Kathy Sylvester?
Here.
Kathy Wetroba? Yes, Rachel Blaine?
Here.
And Anne Marie Clidier is not here without an urgent SOS, is there someone who can? Pitch in and help with the minutes, but luckily being recorded, so that's. Makes it much easier and I can sort of fill in the blanks, but is there someone? Oh, thank you, Rachel, thank you so much, thank you, Rachel. Kudos, all right. Uh, so we did circulate minutes from our September 30th meeting. Were there any corrections to those? No, don't see any, all right, so if I could have a motion to approve those minutes?
Can I just?
Oh, yes, Kathy?
So, um, through the notes, they, they talk about attorney mead and she clarifies language, but then they go down and it says attorney with no, no name, like there's no indicator of who the attorney is, and maybe if we just had.
Oh.
Person, because they were in opposition of. Ha, does not want the law changed, will negative impact, so it was Judith Rathbourn's neighbor.
Right. So that's a good, that's a good point Kathy, so maybe if we were to say, um.
Just what his name?
Attorney for resident Judith Rathbourn, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Rachel?
No, I think we need his name.
Yeah, I think we need his name.
I don't think it should be.
Yeah.
Because he said not a resident.
Yes.
I'll bet we can see that on, um, you know, on that F cap thing, so. Uh, you know. Okay, or and he identified himself, so.
Yep.
That's a good point, that's a good point, thank you, so we will, are there any other suggested changes to the minutes? Oh, okay, good catch Kathy, uh, so can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move that we approve the minutes as amended.
I second that Denise Mason.
Thank you, so that's, uh, Andrea Leibson moving and Denise Mason seconding, um, any more discussion on that? Okay, um, I guess all was in favor of Denise Mason?
With the, with the amendment.
With the amendment, yes. Right, Denise Mason?
Yes.
Andrea Leibson?
Andrea Leibson, yes.
Kathy Sylvester?
Yes.
Kathy Wetroba?
Yes.
And Rachel Blaine?
Yes.
And Lee Wolfco, yes, so the minutes are approved as amended or as amended in the future. All right, so we'll move right on to new business and we are honored to have Linda Dunlevy, the executive director of the FERCog with us tonight. Linda, as you know, we asked you to come as, um, I mean, first of all, some of us are newer than others on the planning board, but also. FERCog has lots of things going and evolving, and so, um, if you can. I think to some degree, give us an overview of FERCog activities, especially with the bent towards planning. Um, and then also we have our half Q and A afterwards, so that, that would be helpful, thank you Linda.
Great, yes, thank you, um, I did create a PowerPoint, so I can just roll through. Everything we do and did try to focus it on things you might be particularly interested in. And in December, you'll be visited by Peggy Sloan and Alyssa LaRose from the Cog, they work for our planning department. So I'm going to gloss over what planning does so as not to waste your time this month or next month. And nice to see many of you are familiar faces, nice to see you. So, okay, if I share my screen?
Please.
Okay.
Alex?
Can you see it?
Looks good.
Yay, yeah, that's always so exciting. Um, does this take the whole screen up, is it now doing the slideshow?
Well, we can see on the left hand column, we can see the.
Now?
Oh, perfect.
Okay, okay, so, here's our mission, our mission is to provide our member towns in the region with quality professional service and advocacy. This is a very old picture of the Cog staff, so if any of you familiar with the Cog, you'll say, she doesn't work here anymore, she doesn't work here anymore, and you're right, we need to update our picture. Plus, this picture is actually two pictures that we melded together, and so it's a, it's like a little puzzle, so when people look distorted, it's because they are. So our total funding in FY21 was 12 million, that was a particularly high year, partially because of COVID, mostly because we were transitioning to the state's emergency communication system, which resulted in a $3 million grant of equipment, radios and portables for all of the first responders in Franklin County. All 26 towns of Franklin County, I assume you know that in 1997, we were the county government. Governor Weld was intent on eliminating county government, we voluntarily abolished ourselves in hopes of getting a better deal. We really didn't, but we became a council of governments, which now means we're a voluntary membership organization. And all of the towns pay a membership fee and get services for that fee. So our membership fee is based on a formula of EQV, equalized value in a town and population. In total, for all 26 towns was $500,000 issue in FY21. And then $28,000 of a statutory assessment that pays for former county retiree health insurance. Um, and you can see our approximate breakdown of funding, which was about 4% was the regional services assessment and 56% grants. Here's a list of all of our programs, I'm just gonna skip right over that. We are. The administration and special projects are funded mostly by our membership assessment and indirect revenue we get from our grants. And we do a lot of special projects that don't have an otherwise identified funding source. Um, or will be at the beginning of a project while we're trying to figure out whether to pursue it or not. Things that you would be interested in is that we use. We use a special grant funding called district local, district local technical assistance to put together municipal official workshops every year. This is a list of the workshops, some of you may have gone to a few of them, we just did a short term residential rental workshop. Covid vaccine, OSHA compliance, we always, every year do a select board 101 and a finance committee 101. We, um, always work with the citizen planner training collaborative to do some specific workshops for planning boards. And up next in November, I believe November 17th is ARPA spending and reporting. We pay for this using a grant called DLTA, like I mentioned. DLTA, you all should keep an eye out for that, we will do the solicitation for projects into the December, January timeframe. And it's where we spend a fair amount of money doing traditional planning projects for our towns at their request. We also run a bunch of municipal service programs. And these are treated as enterprise funds within the council of governments, which means that they are expected to bring in the revenue needed to cover their expense, if they exceed their revenue goals, that extra money stays in their pot, so that they are self, they're like small businesses in our organization. The ones that Deerfield participates in is collective purchasing. We do collective purchasing of highway products and services, fuel and elevator maintenance, those are the three bids Deerfield takes part with, we also provide procurement services to all the towns, because state procurement law continues to get more and more complex. Our cooperative public health service is our, basically our county health district, we now have 16 towns in it. Deerfield is a member of the public health nursing, so our nursing program did all of your contact tracing throughout COVID. Held a couple of flu clinics recently, does senior elder care services, et cetera. And then this is pictures. Um, cooperative inspection program is our building, wiring and plumbing inspection program, we provide services to 16 towns, Deerfield is not a member of our inspection program. You are also not a member of our town accounting program, where we provide municipal accounting to 12 communities. And then we have regional grant funded programs and I'll fly through them. The chip, I didn't know it would do that, the chip is the community health improvement plan and it basically looks at. It analyzes health information in Franklin County and tries to create a plan working with several partners to improve the health outcomes of all people in Franklin County. And an example of that is that we received a grant called improving housing to improve health and it's working with all of the communities. To look at how we can develop more housing in Franklin County, we need more housing in Franklin County. Not only to serve our existing residents, but hopefully to encourage more people to move to Franklin County, because our declining and aging population is, in my opinion, the greatest risk to Franklin County's future. Uh, we have a grant funded emergency preparedness program. Where we do some things that are all four counties of Western Mass, we often pursue. Long term, multi-year grants that are for counties, because we feel like if the Cog manages them. The Cog will make sure Franklin County's needs are taken care of and are always concerned that otherwise they would not be. Our emergency preparedness program helped with regional vaccination clinics with working through COVID response, setting up a coordination coalition during the onset of the pandemic, does a lot of public health preparedness planning, particularly busy in the last two years. Um, and as we talked about earlier, one of the major things we've been working on for about four years is to move our emergency communication system, our first responders to the state's communication system, we currently own, the Cog currently owns the existing emergency communication system and it's failing and its parts are no longer available, so this move to the state provides much more stability to our first responders. Homeland security is another example of we pursued being the fiduciary for homeland security funds throughout the four counties of Western Mass. Um, to make sure that Franklin County's needs were being met and we've been the fiduciary since 2004. And Homeland Security buys a lot of equipment, much of it used during COVID and during the vaccination clinics. In particular, our partnership for youth works on trying to improve health conditions of, of youth, particularly middle school to high school, and we monitor that success by surveying all eighth, 10th and 12th graders and ask about their health options, uh, first use of drugs, alcohol, cigarettes, et cetera. And then use that information to figure out how our programming will be focused in the future. We also have a mass in motion grant through partnership for youth where we're really working on hunger issues. Hunger and health issues, trying to increase SNAP benefits, trying to work with farms to get our local food to people who are hungry and working on diabetes prevention. And then finally, you will hear next month from our planning department, we provide a full suite as the regional planning agency for Franklin County. Primarily grant funded, although we have some special technical assistance available through our planning director Peggy Sloan. And then here is how you are represented by the Cog, Trevor is our council rep and happens to be the council chair. Anna Lee, you're on the planning board, Carolyn Ness is on MAFCO, the, which is our public health emergency preparedness. Bill Swayze's on the regional emergency planning committee and Trevor and Carolyn share the responsibilities of the community public health system oversight board. I tried to do that in 10 minutes, do not know if I succeeded and I will stop sharing. How long did that, oh, that feels like that was more than 10 minutes, I'm sorry.
Hey.
Very quick.
That was great.
Can you share that with us so that we have?
Yes, of course.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Let's see, I guess, um, for questions, maybe if you have questions, you can raise your hand either this way or via the question, the hand raised on the Zoom piece. Um, I, I will begin with one question if I can, while people are figuring those things out, Linda, in terms of dues, wondering what Deerfield pays on an annual basis? And also, sort of what is covered automatically and when are there assessments above and beyond for special projects or special services, if you could give us guidelines on that?
I am very sorry that I did not bring the budget with me, so I do not know what Deerfield pays, but I can get that for you. The basic services covered weed is, is all of the special projects we work on, access to all of our grants and grant programs, we will often write grants specifically for towns to make sure that towns are getting the services they need. All of the legislative advocacy that we do, which honestly, I feel like that's pretty much all I'm doing now, I'm been, I have been testifying at least three times a week on behalf of Franklin County and Franklin County needs. And then access to all the workshops and then, and then we have, um. We have a, we have a certain amount of technical assistance undefined, it kind of depends if towns call in and ask for something, then we will try, we always try to meet the needs of the towns.
So would you be the person we would touch base with if we have a question as to whether or not FERCog could help us with something, or we try to see what the division is in FERCog?
Yeah, it's always good to start with me and I never pretend to be the expert, I will direct you to the correct staff person.
Triage, we love triage.
Yeah.
All right, other. Other, um, questions from the planning board, Kathy, Kathy Wetroba?
Hi Linda, thank you for coming tonight, um, that was great, that was really informative and so one of my questions is sifting through everything, um, so you want to move our emergency communication system to the state system, which sounds like a great idea to me, uh, my question is, is. So that's gonna cover all of the region. But how long does something like that take? Like what is the, what is the point where it is not running at all? And you're trying to switch it from one system to another?
Um, every project takes remarkably longer than you want it to.
Right.
About. I would say about seven years ago, we began to realize that our emergency communication system was failing. And that parts were becoming more scarce. So we started a countywide conversation on, here's our options. I will say that when the Homeland Security Funds bought the emergency communication system that is now dying. And a mistake that we made, and a very serious mistake we made was we assessed communities for the cost of maintaining that system, we did not assess communities enough to replace the system. And so when the system started failing, we had countywide conversations of, here are our choices, our choices are to move over to the state system, pros and cons to that. Or to replace and continue to own a regional system, pros and cons to that. The biggest con would be we would need to assess towns, the cost of a new emergency communication system, plus the cost to replace it in 10 years, because that's about the lifespan of an emergency communication system. It took about two years of discussion to make the decision to move to the state system, it took about another year to get the state to agree that they should let us on their system and has taken about three years to work through that process. Once we worked through the process and received the grant, we received the grant in April or May of last year. And we have 95% of the equipment in and 55% of the departments fully transitioned over.
Wow.
So, once we got through the politics of it all, everything went really quickly.
My sense was Deerfield was very quick on it.
Deerfield, Chief Pachorek was, was a leader and he, and he, um, not, Deerfield was great, Chief Pachorek helped advocate through the whole thing, plus Deerfield was the location where $3 million of equipment was delivered to your police station. And then we would bring our staff in and program it, divvy it up and move it out, Deerfield was instrumental in that.
Right.
And they're probably pretty well versed, I would imagine.
Yes.
In the system itself and the equipment and the dispersment of that information and, and a emergency, okay, thank you very much.
Andrea?
Um, Anna Lee and I attended the short term rental workshop, which was very instructive and by the end, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Anna Lee, but my head was just. And, um, it made us realize that at some point we will have to address that, would we be able to call FERCog in to help us? Beyond the workshop, actually go step by step, um, a way that we could create a bylaw that would, um, address that issue?
The best thing to do is when the district local technical assistance project solicitation comes out, ask for that, because because that's gonna be a big project and so that is, that is the easiest way for us to devote a significant amount of time and money to a project.
How do we know when that list comes out?
Um, you, I can tell you, number one, it will, it will go to Casey and we will ask Casey to distribute it to all of the boards in town. And then ask Casey to, to, uh, work with all of the boards to prioritize, identify and prioritize your needs and issues. So for instance, one of the priorities last year was a visa, the second phase feasibility study of the South County Senior Center. Which we are funding now, right now. So it will come out, we know the grant was, the, the money was allocated in the state budget, so we know we will get the grant. But we do not send out that project solicitation list until after we know what the, what the state is requiring about how we spend the money, they sometimes tweak what they want us to focus on. So we usually wait till we know what the state wants and requires, and then we send out the forms.
Okay, okay.
December, January, generally.
Around the corner.
Yeah, it's a calendar year grant.
Um, I have another question, in general, are there sort of FERCog activities, opportunities that maybe especially relate to planning, but that we could take advantage of that we're not taking advantage of now, that you might say, hey guys, you might want to consider this?
Almost always. Um, I, but I, but I'll have to get back to you with that one too, because I, I think you get a fair amount of service. It, I, I don't know if all of you are new to the planning board, but, um, for many years. You bought planning services from the Cog and Pat Smith was kind of your planner, and so the Deerfield planning board knows how to access the services of the Cog probably better than most planning boards. So I expect you're taking advantage of most that's available, but, but it's hard, we do so many things that sometimes not sometimes you don't always know, so let me get that list of what you, what we are already doing and then I'll see if there's anything.
Oh, thank you, that would be helpful, that's nice.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, Kathy, yes, Kathy Sylvester?
So, um, I was talking to someone on the planning board in Asheville. And I believe, um, someone from FERCog came to speak to them about how climate change might impact their community, do you do something like that?
Yeah, we've done a couple of things, we have, we've done, um, we just finished the Franklin County Stormwater Management Plan. And we also just finished a climate resiliency plan for the Deerfield River watershed. So either one of those could be what, um, they were talking about. We also did the culvert assessment for Asheville, we just finished culvert assessments for Deerfield, so it could have been any one of those things, we do a lot of climate resiliency work.
But you haven't spoke to our planning board recently, or, I mean, I just came on, so I don't know.
Yes, we, we worked with, actually Alyssa to, um, look at our, um. Floodplain bylaws, bylaws, so they, they were very helpful with, uh, floodplain bylaw.
Do you guys, do you all?
Two years ago, three years ago, just.
Do you all get our, our quarterly updates?
I think so.
Well, we get, we get the, um. Newsletter, which I then forward to the planning board, is that the same, no?
No, we, before every council meeting, I do, um, updates for all the council members of, um. Everything the Cog has been doing for the past quarter. And it does summarize nearly all of the planning projects that we're working on. Anna Lee, I can make sure I get you onto that list if you could distribute it to the other members, but that would be a good way. Kathy, for you to see, like you might want to hear about the pollinator plan, you might want to hear about the stormwater management plan or the culvert assessment or whatever, and you can see the projects and we can get staff to come and talk to you about that.
Okay, great, thank you.
What is it, that's a newsletter, that's not the newsletter, that's something else?
No, the newsletter is, we pick one article from every category, the council updates, you have to be patient, because they're usually 12 to 15 pages long, it's, it's pretty extensive. And it, and it really is because our, because our advisory board only meets quarterly, we try to give them as much information every quarter, and so we create this summary of, here's everything we've been doing in the last quarter.
That's actually a really good, um, ongoing education for us of what the Cog does.
Mm-hmm.
To read that list, that's helpful, that's good. Okay, other questions? This is good Linda.
Also, we were involved in the, um, MVP grant, was that was through, also through the Cog and we've been, that's an ongoing, um, vulnerable places.
Yeah.
Grant, which was really helpful.
It's a great program, it's a great program that, that they've recognized that you, you need to go from plan to implementation to evaluate. That you, you need to go from plan to implementation to evaluation. And they provide funding all the way through. That's so rare. It was, it's a great program.
That's good.
I just have one quick question. The um, youth community that work that you do, so it said it's mostly middle school and high school. Is this a, a, a risk group that you consider as a risk group and what types of things do you provide?
The whole, the whole theory of the partnership for youth is that you evaluate risk factors. What, what, what family or community or other dynamics would lead a, a youth. Young person, usually thirteen to eighteen, to make bad choices. And then protective factors, what are those factors that would prevent someone, prevent the young person from. Making bad choices. And so the, it could be something like, we are going to encourage family dinners. Or we're going to encourage schools to work together to have safe ride homes. Or those are the kind of protective factors that have, have been proven to work. And we generally work with all of the school districts in Franklin County. They're kind of our entree in. We aren't working directly with the youth. We are providing the resources for the school districts to work with the youth.
Okay, that's good.
Perfect, thank you.
Nice.
It's a cool model.
Yes, important model, especially now.
Family dinners. Wouldn't think that would, yeah. Those days. Other questions? You have any questions for us, Linda?
I just moved to Deerfield about a year ago, so you're my planning board. I'm so excited.
Excellent, excellent. Well, we will see you at town meeting and hopefully more Zooms.
I don't have questions, except that if you have, um, I will get all of the answers and maybe send Peg and Alyssa with specific answers. But I'll also send you, Anna Lee, the council updates, get you on that list. And get more information about the assessment to you.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if we don't have any other questions, Linda, thank you very much. Really appreciate having you this evening.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you all.
Yes, and welcome to Deerfield.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
All right. That was great. That's good.
That's great.
Sometimes you need to be told things again and again and again. Maybe I'll go back now and re- look at their um. Website again and it will even filter in a little bit more.
So just for, for everybody's dedication, so we worked with Pat Smith. Who she, she referred to, she referred to um, for a long time. I think when I first joined the board and then for six years, I, I, we were adrift when she retired, because we didn't pick somebody else up. They didn't have anybody else for us at the cog at that time. Staffing wise, they were a little slim. And so that's, that's when we started writing our own decisions. She was great. She helped us write decisions. She did a lot of the things that um, Jen does now for us. Um, so anyway, and she was in. Very insightful about Franklin County towns, which I think is very specific, you know, that we're um. That's specific kind of town. Uh, sixteen towns, these are small, like Deerfield's. A behemoth among this group of towns. And uh, so I, I, and she, but she was incredibly helpful and kept us connected with the cog too.
Yeah.
We kind of lost that a little bit um, with shifting away from uh, having Pat as a. An advisor and consultant.
Well, as um, Linda mentioned at our December meeting. The um, two representatives, so two people from the planning department, the FERC cog, um, are going to come and talk with us. Talking especially about some of the myriad of housing issues, but also um, planning. Services that FERC could offer or assist us with. And in particular, as, as we've noted, the select ward seems to be quite interested, or as mentioned a number of times recently about. The possibility of having a town planner, sharing a planner with other towns, whatnot. And so we might be able to talk with them, them a little bit more about that. Or find out what their thoughts are with that at the December meeting. So it'd be a nice train to jump back on. Seems. Good. Alrighty. So um, Mr. Rodriguez is here for the A and R for ninety-four Sugarloaf. And also Bob Walden is here, and maybe Bob, if you want to introduce it. And then um, Mr. Rodriguez can chime in there if we have any questions specifically for him. That would be good. And I don't know, maybe if we're back with sharing screen, Alex, with the, um, especially with the map. So Bob, where's Bob? Building inspector is somewhere. I see him somewhere.
I'm right here. Hello. Yeah, it's. Well, it's a A and R plan to divide. The lot into three lots. It's a little different. There's a strip of land owned by the Gramackies that blocks.
Can we, excuse me for interrupting, can we bring that up so we can see it? I don't know who brings it up, if it's Alex or if it's Bob?
I don't have it. Uh, yeah.
Um, can you send it to me?
Is it on the web? I have it. I don't know if I can share it.
Yes, you certainly can, if you have it.
I don't know if I have the technical ability.
Oh, okay.
I can do it. I can do it. That was sharing before inadvertently, so I might as well share on purpose this time. But let's see, here's the problem. Well, except for that I want to turn it. Let me see if I can, you can see it.
Yes.
Sorry. No, it was better this way. Sorry.
That's fine. Thank you, Rachel. So Bob, excuse us for interrupting.
Yeah, so there, when they first came to me, asking me. There's a strip of land, very tiny strip of land along Gramacki, that blocks the frontage to both those lots. And it leaves about thirty feet of frontage on the one on Lot B. So the question brought to me was. You know, is that adequate for access? And it, and it didn't have adequate frontage by definition is how I saw it. So they came back with this triangular piece for the frontage requirement.
This one?
Yes, so that they'd have a hundred and seventeen feet of frontage to access Lot B. I mean, that can't count towards the lot. Square footage, but I don't, I, I think it means the definition of frontage. I mean, it's an unin- uninterrupted. Frontage along Gramacki Avenue, a hundred and seventeen feet long. And there's adequate room to put a driveway in, because they can come ten feet off the pen on Gramacki. And ten feet off the new pen on the Sugarloaf piece, and have a twelve-foot wide driveway. And our definition of frontage is continuous along a street line with adequate access for fire and safety. So I felt like it met the frontage definition.
Um, so I don't, I don't speak out of turn. My name is Daniel Salz. I'm a land surveyor that, that did the survey.
And I thought. That'd be great, yes.
Be really good to come to this meeting, because it is really unusual. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have about it. Um, Deerfield's uh, planning board regulations are, and zoning bylaws are a little bit different in that. They allow uh, a property to have frontage. That. Doesn't meet the, the minimum lot depth for, you know, required by the zoning for that district. But as long as it's adequate frontage, it could be considered frontage, but it can't be used to calculate the minimum area. Uh, this was a really a weird one, the. That little triangular sliver that blocks off Gramacki Ave from the rest of Mr. Rodriguez's property. Is, is what's now referred to as a spite sliver. Um, when they subdivided the, the, the property they owned. And laid out Gramacki Ave in Deerfield, uh, there was a disagreement between the Gramackies and the Wysockis. That made them withhold that, that little sliver. Um, it's completely illegal now with every zoning bylaw. But. There, there was a way to at least get the one building lot out of, out of the property. Based on the note seven exception Deerfield zoning that. Uh, if you exempt the area, you could use the frontage, as long as there weren't any. Angles of less than or more than sixty degrees off of the frontage to create the property. I think the really unusual part of this too is that Ms. Gramacki at this point wants to buy what would be um. Parcel A, I called it. There will still be a little, she, she owns the sliver from the proposed parcel A all the way to. The unmonumented point on Gramacki Ave in front of parcel B. Parcel A would be.
So I'm, can I just ask for clarification, what you're talking about? Because I don't see what you're talking about. So she owns this property?
Not, she will.
No, no, A- Alex Rodriguez currently owns all of this.
Right, right, right. So what does she own?
She owns, it's a triangular sliver that's really hard to see on the plan. And I revised this thing a million times. I was trying to blow it up and make it clear. But essentially, they reserved a, a slice that is one foot wide on the western side. Of Alex's property. Going.
This goes north, south.
Two hundred point five nine feet to the east to, to nothing.
Along here?
Yeah.
Is it, is it that little rectangle?
A little tiny sliver.
It's a little tiny triangle. It, it, it's what's now called a spite sliver.
So this was the spite sliver?
That is the spite sliver. And I would have put a note on the plan and I, I, I told Alex that. My, I, I would have put a note on parcel A would have been not a building lot under current zoning. Because it's blocked by what Gramacki owns. And I would have suggested that, you know, you put an easement on the back line so that he could maintain the property. But there's an agreement in place with Gramacki and Alex that she's going to purchase the property. And combine it with the spite sliver to, to make the building lot for that part of it. Um, the, the really unfortunate part of this is that she still did not want to relinquish. The part of the, the triangle that will be on Gramacki Ave in front of parcel B.
Can I just ask you, sir, it is, so she only owns that? She doesn't own this?
It, it's all that is left of the Gramackies holdings from, it was originally a six point two two five acre lot. When they subdivided and laid out Gramacki Ave. Uh, it wa- it was really a, a personal dispute between the Gramackies and it was Anthony Wysocki owned what Alex owns now, so.
So we need to make sure that this, I, I mean, in doing any of this, this is still not a buildable lot. Lot A is still not a buildable lot.
Well, so it doesn't have a note on that it is not a buildable lot, because it is to be conveyed to and combined with. Other lands of Gramacki, which is the spite sliver, which gives her adequate frontage and adequate area to be a buildable lot. If that transaction happens.
Then what happens, what, what happens to parcel B?
Parcel B has the adequate frontage on Gramacki Ave. Uh, the, I think the requirement is a hundred feet. Gramack, uh, parcel B has a hundred and seventeen point three eight feet of frontage, which meets the zoning requirement. The stipulation in Deerfield zoning is that. There's also a minimum lot depth of fifty feet for a lot in this area. The stipulation in Deerfield zoning is, it's a footnote seven. Any area of a proposed lot that does not meet the required minimum debt cannot be. Used to calculate the minimum lot area in the district. So in this case, I mean, there's plenty of area exempting that. It, it, you, you know, this is.
This cannot be counted.
Yeah, that, that.
That's the area, right.
Can't be counted. And then, you know, I would never do this plan if the building inspector, I mean. There's plenty of room to put a, a driveway in there to meet the setbacks for a driveway. And ensure adequate access for. Fire trucks and police too.
Okay, so can I ask again? So this, this sliver, whatever you call that, spike, whatever? That is only, that's only on parcel A. It does not also, I mean, there's a little square that goes over parcel A and parcel B. And so.
Parcel B also.
Blocks one hundred point five nine feet of um, parcel B as well. So that, otherwise parcel B would have uh, two hundred and seventeen point four feet of frontage on it. So she is still going to own, and, and like I said, I, I, I think it's really unfortunate. She didn't want to just relinquish that. Clean this up. I, I, I really do.
And we, can we uh, be more encouraging of that so that, you know, how, if we.
Look, look, I'm the land surveyor and, and I can suggest all the sensibility in the world. But this is a, a family feud that goes back for all time. And I really, I, I really thought that, that being able to create a building lot on. The, the lot anyways would encourage her to, that was sort of the leverage, right? Like you can't do anything with this because of the spite sliver. There is a way under the Deerfield zoning to. To, to do this. Uh, I, I really thought that that would. Encourage a little bit of, I, 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 as a surveyor, I, I really don't like looking at a piece of property shaped like this. I, I.
Well, we, we want to encourage um. Housing, uh, you know, to be available. And if we have a beautiful lot in a nice area of town that can't be built on. That's kind of a problem.
Well, I, and I think, you know, with the parcel A to be conveyed and combined with other land of Gramacki. She will have adequate frontage for that to be a building lot. And I think her intent is to uh, build a, you know, house for one of her grandkids or something.
So I, this is Anna Lee. I have a question. Is our, our main focus really is parcel B? We're not really concerned with parcel A and whether or not that can convey, you know, the agreement falls through or. Does it, right? Is that correct?
Well, you are in, in, you know, I put the note on that uh, to be conveyed to and combined with other land of Gramacki. If that transaction failed to happen, then, you know, the building inspector would not issue a building permit for the lot. Uh, because it wouldn't have adequate, adequate frontage. Um, I only created this plan because that agreement is in place. Otherwise, like I said, my note would have said um. Not a building lot, and I would have suggested to Alex that. He put an easement through parcel B to access parcel A, because it would be cutting it off. To, to maintain it as needed. But the uh, the agreement is in place and uh, I, I, like I said, I, I just think it's unfortunate. She doesn't want to. Just give up that little part that's gonna be blocking uh, parcel B from. The, the, the frontage. It's, it's, it's crazy.
Um, I know with our site plan review. Proposals, we can approve something with conditions, and I'm a little uncertain about that for A and Rs. But potentially is that a condition that we would endorse this A and R contingent upon the. Um, successful. Convenance of parcel A?
You can and you should. Um, you can, you can put uh, conditions on an A and R. Uh, so you should definitely, yeah.
What about the, it looks like, and Rachel, you've done a great job with blowing this up. Looks like there's a barn from that. That property that's already, that's on parcel B. What, what hap- do we care about that?
They're gonna remove the barn.
It's, yeah, it's, it's gonna be removed. Um, so you can also put a condition on that. You know, endorsement contingent upon removal. It's up to you if you want to put a, a time on that. You might want to ask Alex about his availability of a contractor to do the work. Um, it's hard to plan on that right now, but. Uh, but again, the, the building inspector has a lot of latitude to um, limit permitting based on those conditions not being met.
So I'm afraid I'm still confused. So there are now. So I'm afraid I'm still confused. So there are now, all of this land is owned. By Mr. Rodriguez and part of it is going to be conveyed to. Ms. Gromacky. Am I understanding that correctly?
So. Yeah, and, and this is the, this is why I'm here. Um, so.
The number four um, of the A and R application, it says that number of existing parcels lots is one. The number of new parcels lots is blank. So. What is that blank number gonna be?
I'm not sure. I didn't fill that out and actually I um. Left that uh, the, the town clerk because towns have different interpretations of existing lots and new lots. Uh, some towns consider uh, the remaining land a new lot as well.
Yes.
Some towns would say.
Lots, in other words.
Some towns would say three, some towns would say two new lots. Um. If that's blank, uh, you know, when I sent Alex in to the town clerk, I, I, I suggest he get his guidance there from.
I did, I did ask Karen. She said that typically. The Sugarloaf lot would remain the same. And so I don't know whether that really, I don't know the way to.
And, and that's why.
Come up with is that three or two lots being created?
And, and to be honest, that's why I don't, uh. You know, I'll start the A and R form for people to form A, but um, I always say just ask the town clerk and, you know, the fee is dependent on. The interpretation of new lots versus. Uh, so. I leave that blank. If it didn't get filled in, I'm not sure why.
Well, then it sounds like if, if that's blank, which is also determinative of the fee, then perhaps. The um, application can't be acted upon until that's completed.
Well. You, you know, that's not really for me to interpret or not. Um, I suspect that Alex wrote a check for whatever the fee was and you could. Sort of interpret what the. Town clerk's in idea of new versus uh, new. Existing uh. Whatever she charged him is, is sort of.
Looks like it was one hundred sixty dollars.
Yeah, I think it's creating, it was charged as if it's creating two new lots and the existing lot stays the same.
So again.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And if the form A is blank in that part, I, I think the check sort of speaks to what. That should say, so.
If an existing lot is altered. Would the town of Deerfield consider that then become a new lot? So altered even by removing that barn? Would, would that, you know what I mean? So there's one existing lot, two new lots. Would altering an existing lot generate the classification of a new lot?
Well, the removal of the barn doesn't alter the, the existing lot in, in a, 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 a property sense or a. Planning board preview sense. The, 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 the biggest thing would be, like I said, you could put a condition on that, you know, this is contingent upon removal of the barn. It, it. There's no. Change in the conformity of lot, the existing lot in, in any way. Um. You know, sometimes, you know, there's also an existing carriage house and. That carriage house wouldn't meet the setback to the property line. On here. And I, sometimes I'll put that on there and note like it's an existing non-conforming setback. You know, it's not altering the, the, the property in that way. The, the, the barn, like I said, you, you certainly could put a contingency on that this is. The, the barn has to go for this to be. A building lot, you know, you can't make a. Something more non.
I wouldn't allow, give a building permit without the barn gone.
Exactly, right, so.
I would say to follow up on Kathy's question, it sound, it seems like where it says remaining land of Alex Ro- Rodriguez. That um, that little trapezoid actually does change the site, the configuration of that lot, right?
Well, no, the remaining trapezoid is owned by Gromacky. And it's already an existing non-conforming lot. So she owns. And, and this is something new for the assessors. So I noted on the plan that it's now reformally Gene Gromacky Tax Map one eighty-three twenty point one. Now, if you look at the assessor's maps. They don't have that as its own separate parcel. That is one foot wide tapering down to nothing at the end. This recently came to their attention and I put the one eighty-three twenty point one. Their intent is to use that designation. Uh, for assessment purposes going forward. They're gonna amend the maps and create the triangle on the, the newer maps. But. No, the, the, that is an existing non-conformity. Uh, and, and one of the big reasons I was here, I had all sorts of notes all over this plan and. You're allowed to. Use a portion of a road as frontage for a property and then make a weird shape to make the rest of the property to make it buildable. But one of the big conditions in, in Deerfield's exceptions is the angle of. The new property off of the road and it has to be less than sixty degrees and. You know, that. Angle is, is nothing at the, the peak of the triangle, but it's an existing non-conformity. Not something that's being altered by the A and R that we're, we're doing here. And, and again, I, I'm just gonna reiterate, I. I think it's crazy that she wouldn't just. You know, grant that over the, the proposed parcel B. I, I, I do. But she will, she will own. Uh, uh, that. Little tiny section. I mean, her property is going to. That, that parcel A is going to run along Gromacky Avenue. The, the, the whole distance in front of parcel B and then angle back uh. To the new line of between parcel A and parcel B. It's, it's gonna be a really strange shaped piece of property. Again, the, the. It's an existing non-conforming feature. It's, it's not. Making a non-conforming property more non-conforming. It just. Is what it is. She, she owns that frontage. And, and, and just to be clear. That kind of action has been outlawed, you know, for quite some time now. You, you, you can't do that now.
So, I, I don't, still confused. So is, is parcel B building lot or not?
Yes, parcel B be a building lot when you consider from, if you see that little triangle symbol. At the end of the little spike strip there. We'll give it frontage from that triangle to Sugarloaf Street of a hundred and seventeen feet.
But I thought she owned that triangle.
No, no, she doesn't own that part. That, that was owned by Mr. Rodriguez. He's gonna give that to parcel B to create a building lot.
So he's changing his building lot.
He's changing his building lot to allow access to parcel B.
I thought that's what we were talking about all this.
No, there's another little tiny, tiny sliver that blocks in front of the two lots. It's confusing because we're talking about two triangles and I wish I could point to it, but.
Yeah.
Rachel's doing a pretty good job here.
So I do, I do apologize. That's not clear, but that, that is, you know, at the scale that I had to do the plan, it's, it's almost impossible to illustrate that.
The frontage is, is Bob, just the frontage is from here to here. That's the building lot. So that is what makes. This building lot frontage and it's, it's the opposite of any kind of flag thing because the frontage there would be, anyway. Th- these are the angles that are the awkward angles. Like we have to watch out for those angles.
Right, they'll have to stay, she'll have to stay ten feet in from that new point and ten feet in from Mr. Rodriguez's new point. And to. According to the driveway by law, that still leaves her twelve feet for a driveway, which is an adequate access.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and the angles coming off of the intersecting roadways are less than. You know, what, what, what is allowable, so.
And the frontage is on Sugarloaf? It's not on Gromacky?
No, it's on Gromacky.
It's on Gromacky, right?
Okay.
So Kathy, this is the, this is the spite spike.
Yeah.
It's here.
Yes.
It's tiny.
I see that.
Wildly tiny and it goes all the way, apparently. How did that happen?
Keeps going right to there, to that point, right there.
Right there.
Okay, so. So we're changing lot. The Rodriguez lot. And then.
Yeah, we're changing the whole Rodriguez lot.
Right, and then we're creating two new lots, which is proposed under number five on this A and R. It does clarify that they're looking at two new lots.
So this is his whole lot right here.
But you're really changing the Rodriguez lot, so there's. Three lots.
Yeah, but Mr. Rodriguez's lot will still be a conforming building lot. It's not creating a non-conforming lot.
His frontage is along Sugarloaf.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. But we're making his parcel smaller, really.
Right.
Yeah.
But he still has adequate um.
Frontage and all.
Cover in, in lot size and everything. It's not.
Yeah.
Not creating an illegal lot or anything.
Right, right. No, I'm just trying to make sure that this paperwork, which didn't say the number of new parcels. But under number five, it says two new lots, so. We're not counting his property as a new lot.
That remains the lot. The, the number it is, right? The lot, map and lot number.
And what is? Sorry. What is our concern about the carriage house? Would, because it's not set back.
That's a separate issue. That's a non-conforming structure. That doesn't make it a non-conforming lot. Like, so that's a pre-existing non-forming structure because it's too close to the property line, but that's just the way it is. I mean.
And it's very old?
Well, it's, yeah, and it's an existing non-conformity, like to an existing, like that, that property line is not being altered in, you know, for this A and R. So it's acceptable that it doesn't meet the minimum setback currently because it was.
It's a pre-existing non-conformity.
It's that distance right there. That's two.
Yeah.
So it sounds like, other than the um, sort of. Wisdom or not of having that teeny, teeny, tiny little sliver, which it sounds like we don't really have much control over. Our main considerations, still with this A and R. Would be that there would be a um, a condition that it could, it could be endorsed. Uh, pending, pending or contingent upon barn removal and conveyance. A parcel A. To, and conveyance of par- parcel A to a new owner. Really? Is that correct? I mean, do, do we have to be?
If I could clarify that, I, if I could clarify that parcel A wouldn't be a buildable lot unless it was conveyed to the Gromackys. Or, or they sold that strip to whoever, oh, you know what I mean, that.
So we, that's why I think we, we just want to put an asterisk on there, two things. These are, these are gonna be for sale, right? So the, as Bob said, the.
Oh, no, they're, they're actually both already sold, interestingly. Um. The owner, Alex, didn't even, you know, he just owned his house and lived in his house and people approached him kind of out of the blue. Uh, so there's an agreement in place for, for both of them.
So the purchase and sale is in place, but, but so what you're saying, but we still, in advance of that, we, we can't make it, we can. It's not a buildable lot until that happens and they're gonna have to come before us.
And, and planning boards can't really, like, you guys are evaluating the, the proposal in relation to the current zoning, right? And ultimately. Your ability to see if that's adequate viable access is, is pretty limited on a piece of paper anyway, so. Really, it's the, the building inspector is, is kind of the, the stopgap there where. You guys could look at this and say, well, it beats the frontage and the zoning. When he evaluates permitting a building on that property, if he looks at it and says, well. Yeah, it's got a hundred feet of frontage, but it's a thirty foot cliff. Just because you got, and that's why I put the note on there, you know, uh, planning board endorsement does not. Uh, certify that this is a buildable lot, right? So without the, the conveyance happening, I mean, his job as the building inspector is to not permit it.
Yeah, I wouldn't allow building it, or I wouldn't allow lot A to build on without access. Through the front.
No, no, told my secretary, Daniel, can you give us your, your full name so we can have that for the minute?
Oh, sorry, uh, my name is Daniel Salz.
Salz, S A L S?
S A L L S.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, uh, Bob.
Well, I was just saying that he, he was correct. I mean, I, I wouldn't allow. Parcel A to be built upon without the frontage being owned. By parcel A, whoever that is, like whether Gromacky sell both pieces to somebody else, then that would be fine, or. If it all fell apart, then parcel A would be a landlocked piece. Until the Gromacky was willing to sell that strip for frontage.
And, and as the surveyor doing this plan, I, my, my comfort zone was more to just identify it as not a building lot. And, and I. My preference was to put an easement through parcel B. So that if that sale fell through, Alex could maintain the landlocked piece. I mean, it's funny, it's landlocked, right? It's one foot wide at one end and. Uh, you could literally lift a lawnmower over the other end to, to mow it and maintain it, but. Uh, but, but I was. Fairly satisfied, you know, that is actually happening and. If it doesn't, you know, ultimately the building inspector wouldn't permit it, but. My, my preference was to have a, a maintenance easement until it, it went through, but.
Okay, so. Endorsement contingent upon. One, the building removal and two, and this is where I'm a little bit. I'm sure about what the actual verbiage would be that. Number two would be notation that building lot A is not a build, a buildable lot in its current. Configuration. Is that correct? Would that be accurate?
I, I would say, and if, you know, you have town council that consults on this, you might want to just, you know, run, run it by them, just to.
I think that's fairly, it's really standard, just a notation saying that it's not a buildable lot as it stands. That's not to say that it couldn't be a buildable lot that, but. When we are approv, when we are not approving it, because it's do not approve, but when we are endorsing it, sorry. Um, this is part of, part of the eyes on that we get to have. That's not unusual.
Okay.
Would we indicate why it's not buildable in case somebody were? I got like Bob is gonna see it right away. It's not like, but we don't always have Bob. Next guy's gonna come along. It's just a matter of.
I mean, that was, that was a very tricky one, that little. Strip there, super tricky.
Super weird and it's, that's.
Again, not, not even legal anymore. It's, it's just.
Which is part of the reason that I would feel more comfortable having this um, addendum, just because it's not the kind of thing. That is easily cited because it's unusual.
Denise, did you have a question? Thank you.
Basically, it's only a building lot if Gromacky, if Gromacky buys that because they currently own that spite strip. So unless Gromacky. Unless Gromacky buys it, it is not a building lot, period.
The strips.
Exactly.
Right, yeah. All right. Um, Mr. Rodriguez, I don't know if there's anything you want to add or if there are other questions that we should have from the planning board?
No, I'm, Daniel pretty, pretty, did a pretty good job advocating for uh, for the plan, so I know it's unusual. So. I commend him, I commend him for his efforts. Thank you.
Just, just to be clear though, surveyors are not advocates. We are impartial reporters of.
Well, well, just in the conversation of the night, not in, not in general.
We got that. We get it.
Thanks.
Would, would we also ask that the, um, that the A and R application be amended to include a number in? Uh, number four, and number four, number of new parcels slash lots?
Is two, right?
But it's, but I wrote the two in.
Oh, no, but it sounds, it seems like it is. It is, and that's what they've said in.
The town clerk charged and, and like I said, some towns. They, they, towns just look at it differently, you know? You're taking a building lot out of one parcel, some towns say, well, you're creating two new parcels, some towns say you're creating one parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah, my point, my point is that some number be put in that, on that line, not by us.
I was, I was just gonna say a great example would be like the Sugarloaf condominiums where you took a lot and then divided it into all kinds of lots. That created all new lots where. This would leave Mr. Rodriguez's lot the same number. So two, just two different ways to visualize it.
And, and, you know, I, I, I don't know how it got missed. That number didn't get filled in when the town clerk took the paperwork, but, you know, she. Sort of identified that when she took the check for what she thought was new lots and what was.
So do you feel, Bob, I mean, in particular, do you feel that that's adequate given the rest of the application?
Well, yeah, you, you could ask. Well, yeah, you you could ask that you want the number. That's up to you, but I do. I do feel like it's creating two new lots and leaving one the same. But I'm not the town clerk, so but yeah.
But one, it says a number five.
Yeah.
You look, two new lots, so it's just they didn't put the number in number four.
That's clear by implication, especially with the fee as well as later on in the file.
Yeah, my my point is that for completeness, we don't want it to be blank and have somebody put in, I don't know, some crazy number later.
Right. So Andrea, then, would you like to make the motion? And I think we now maybe have three that that it would be to endorse the A and R with the conditions that the number of buildable lots in item four to or item four be completed by the town clerk. Is that correct?
I I so moved.
Oh, well, well, we got a couple more. That contingent on number, number two part is that the barn is removed. And number three, that there is a notation that lot A is not a buildable lot.
As it currently stands?
As as currently configured.
So moved. I'm not repeating that.
Second, you got you got that, Rachel?
I second it.
Thank you, Kathy Sylvester. Second, um, is there any further discussion? No, okay, um, I'll do look hall. Somehow I just, this was rando. Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrew Leepson?
Andrew Leepson, yes.
Kathy Sylvester?
You're muted.
Oops, Kathy is still muted.
Sorry, Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
And Annalee Wolfco, yes. So it is unanimously approved. And I guess congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
At this point, we're.
Right. I'm gonna turn my video on for one second because I meant to do that beginning and just say thank you for listening to me. It was you know, this was unusual. You know, I guess it was, I hope it was a little bit of fun for you guys, too.
Thank you.
For me, it was, you know, a little different, but.
Yeah.
Great fun. Yeah.
Have a good night and, uh, yeah, keep those spite slivers illegal. It's not.
Yeah, geez. Now we all learned something new. My gosh, these spikes.
Is public comment allowed?
Uh, well, we will be having public comment at the end of our meeting.
Okay, it was just about parcel B.
Uh. Uh, well, um, we've already approved the A and R, but um. Sure, Mr. Cunningham, go for it.
Well, okay, I'm the purchaser of parcel B, I hope, in the future. And I was listening intently, and I think Daniel did a great job and the building inspector and so on. I was hoping you would make some comment or recorded opinion about the spite sliver along parcel B. You know, I can move ahead and and live with the way it is, and I'm happy to do that. I just thought maybe you would want to go on the record somehow about that spite sliver and the blocking of the frontage. But so thank you.
Okay. Well, I think we all feel good that those are no longer allowed. And it seems like our hands are somewhat tied. Denise?
That's that's out of our purview to do anything about the spite sliver.
Unfortunately.
What we can do is we can add it to the minutes. That is something that we would be on the watch for in the future, that it's a dilatory to positive growth. So in the future.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable, Rachel. That's good. All right. Thank you. All right, um, moving on then. Can anyone hear my background two-year-old?
I've got babies. That's so unfair. You're just showing off, Annalee.
Uh, I might show off just enough to mute in the moment. Um, so, um, moving on then for the another, the other rule, a major piece of our meeting this evening is wanting to have a review, um, discussion amongst town amongst planning board members about um, town meeting and primarily or really.
Bye, Bob. Bob's leaving.
Bye, Bob.
All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks for your help.
Um. If that's, I'll I'll talk quickly and then I'll mute. Um. Wanting to focus especially or really only on the planning board's um, role in all of the different things that happen with the town meeting, not really wanting to um do a big review of town meeting or other.
The special, the special town meeting that we just had or?
Yes, yes, the special town meeting that we just had. Um, I think in particular, as um as uh, I kind of was reflecting on it as we were going through, and I think I gave you all a heads up to kind of make some notes of it. There are there were some new things that the planning board did in relation to the public hearings and then also just um, some general sort of activity that um for now, for me as planning board chair, that I've observed two out of two town meetings in terms of a big scurry of activity and just thinking about how we might be able to um how or if we might be able to control that a little bit better. Um, so I mean, maybe I'll start out with potentially part of what might be an easier part is as we were having public hearings. We put forward some guidelines for public comments. And so interested in the planning board's um thoughts about those um are and and.
I'm muted. Can't hear you.
I pressed something by. Um, public comments. Um, when we had public comments for bylaws that were being presented, these were guidelines that we created that they would that each member of the public could speak once. Two minutes maximum. We had a timer. There was no back and forth between the person who was speaking and the planning board. Um. The presenter or the the originator of the bylaw presented and closed and at times also spoke as a resident. And then there was a question of having point of order. So I mean, all of those things with public comments. So and and, you know, maybe we can still try to have a little bit of uh, order to how we do this rather than just everybody interrupting everyone. So I'll just try to um call on you as I see you raising your hand. So the two minutes, do you think the two minutes worked? Yeah, Kathy, or go on, Kathy.
Um, yeah, two minutes worked. I um I found it frustrating that, you know, I couldn't ask a question of someone when I didn't understand what they were trying to say. So I could get some clarification. Um, or, you know, especially when it came around on one instance, I'm, I can't remember the particulars about trying to make a decision on something.
Now, Kathy, is this in relation to the time when we were having public comment or is it in relation to when um, proposals were being brought forward to us? Because that actually is 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 another area that I am interested in is when all of a sudden there's sort of a you know, last minute, which might be four to six weeks prior to town meeting that then a new bylaw is being presented to us. And in some instances, like with the tourism overlay district, that was a pretty complex bylaw. And how how can we in fact have good, like you say, Q and A, good good review to be able to give the kind of um to sit make kind of decisions that we need to make?
I think actually two different things happened. One was public comment when some I think it was Skip Olmstead said something about his opinion about something, and I wasn't sure if he was for or against the project, and I couldn't get clarification. The other time was, I think, on the tourism overlay district when I had a question, you know, I'm I'm having to make a decision and I couldn't ask a question on the proposal. So I was, it was.
Yeah. So Denise, just a second on that one. So I mean, Rachel, because I think the addressing the first thing that you're saying, Kathy, in terms of what asking for clarification, because I know at one point you were asking clarification, Rachel, with Bruce St. Peters for, you know, and during, well, no, it was okay. I mean, during the public comment period. So is that is that something we want to try to modify in the future, or is that something that we kind of just have to live with? Or?
You asking me or asking Rachel?
No, just, you know, for some, I put her people's thoughts. Denise?
I I thought that the issue was, Kathy, that when you asked one question, I don't recall what or what you wanted to ask. We had already voted. So if you wanted to ask that question, you should have asked it before we had voted. If I remember correctly, that may not be the case.
I'm sorry. I wish I had better memory of it. I think.
But I do remember Rachel did.
I I remember mine, too. I I just excavate that that it was about the canopies. And Bruce was, you know, eager to say no to canopy. And actually, looking at our bylaw, I would maybe amend it to put more more specificity around canopy because our bylaw is kind of general, like it it could cover pavement.
But but this kind.
That was my question at the time, and I just didn't know, you know, where his concern was. And you're right, and I just busted out and asked. So.
Well, but that's, yeah. And that's, you know, the facts of whether or not if we're, if we want to have clarification from a member of the public.
Yeah.
Who is saying something or even if they are stating something that maybe is incorrect and we may want to um.
Oh.
Clarify, you know, so what?
Judith Ratbone said, well, you've just brought out the solar thing out of the blue. And she made a big statement about that. And and I just, I I was sitting in front of her at the annual town meeting, so she must have been like snoozing during that portion of it. Plus, we've been working on it for years. Anyway, I was biting my tongue till it bled to try to say, no, in fact, this isn't just out of our back pocket. We've been really working on it.
So I guess the broad question with this is, when there is public comment, right now, we're saying there will be no back and forth. Um, is, do we want to continue with that or would we like to consider moderate?
So and that, so so the example that Rachel just gave is one of correcting uh, you know, the public record. So instead of, you know, it's not that we're disagreeing. No, we didn't just pull it out of our hats, but know this, the discussions have been going on since you know, for the last two years, they may have been going on only, um, you know, among uh, at the planning board, which is open to the public. So you could you could have come. Um, this is not something that's uh, that's being decided quickly. Likewise, someone raised the question, well, why do we have to do the park now? And, you know, why is this just suddenly coming up? No, it's not just suddenly. So so could could we correct? Could we offer corrections or maybe that doesn't even?
Well, that's where, I mean, what I was kind of thinking was hap- seemed like what was happening is as people were saying, public was giving comments, then we could jot down those comments. And when we close the public meeting, we can make those corrections. So it doesn't sort of open up this free for all. Or, you know.
Yes. So for example, um, at one of the I think, public hearings, um, somebody said, oh, there's a rumor that uh, the town is going to go bankrupt if we didn't get Treehouse in there. And the finance committee, I thought that was very interesting. Multiple members of the finance committee jumped up to say, no, 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 I don't know where you're getting this. We are correcting this. We're stopping this false information now. And in these days, misinformation is something we really need to address. Um, so maybe misinformation is something we can, just but I I do like your idea of addressing it all at once, but I think we also need to be careful not to let it slide because people say a lot of false things, as we all know. And if you say them over and over again, people start to believe them even though they're false. So maybe we do need to um to address some things immediately.
Kathy, Kathy Witroba?
So it also, you know, and I don't have like a long term on the board to give perspective on this, but it seems like we had a lot heavy volume of information in a relatively short amount of time, and it was just a lot of different things. And we're all trying to like learn it, orient ourselves, understand our positions, listen to the community at large, not only in meetings, but just like walking the dog and getting gas, you know, and and every, it was just it was a lot of information that we had to, you know, filter and you know, work through in a short amount of time. So I mean, I think it's fair even in a meeting situation like that, to ask somebody to clarify their position. For the record, could you please clarify your position? So I understand your perspective. Right? Rather than, I I think it's a great idea to allow people to have their two minutes to speak. If we start getting in this back and forth dialogue, well, we we could be there all night long, right? So you get your two minutes. Then if we understand clearly what they're saying, then great, you know, next person, please speak. But if we are, if any one of us is unclear to say, could you please clarify that for the record?
Would this tie into, um, I know in some meetings, they're starting to be, we're start use point of order. And I'm not really that familiar with that from a Roberts rules standpoint, but would this be something that could sort of put more formality around it rather than the free for all back and forth of, you know, point, well, whether or not it's point of order, but doing something to say clarification point or something like that.
What does what does point of order really mean?
Well, I'm.
I don't either.
Google it.
That right now.
Ah, good. Denise knows.
What is it?
Raised by member regarding some point considered to be irregular in the conduct.
Oh, so it doesn't.
It's a question, someone in in the audience raises a question because they feel that something um, something is considered irregular in the in the meeting. Okay? The conduct of the meeting.
So it wouldn't be misinformation. It wouldn't be misinformation. Or would it be Denise?
I don't know whether that would be misinformation. I know that Bob Decker was the one who was saying point of order, point of order.
So was Jan Ramelard.
Well, this definition that someone, someone draws attention to a rules violation in a meeting of a deliberate assembly. So somebody, that point of order is saying that is in violation of X.
So also would not be in violation.
I mean, I I'm just wondering, too, if like we can, not to jump in front of anybody, but if we can I just felt like it was just an overwhelming amount of various types of information converging in this almost frenzy of, but we have to, because we need to get this in, and we have to get it in the paper. And we're kind of like, how how do we learn make a position if that is what we need to do or not?
Right. I think that's a great question, Kathy.
Good job. I just think it came at like a onslaught of stress.
Let's put that in the parking lot for a minute and just tie up this one piece about um, do we feel that right now having just the public to present for two minutes? Um, if there is misinformation or if there is uh people are asking us questions that we do that at the end of the public hearing time? Just like we did this time, or do we want to modify that? Denise?
I think we should do it at the end because I think that that puts us back in the position that we should be in, that we are take, that we are in control of the meeting. Because if not, it's going to go off the rails and then we do it for one person, the next person's going to do it. It's going to be very chaotic. And I think I think it's a lot more proactive doing it that way. And I think each of us should be responsible in writing, jotting down anything that's wrong. And then at the end, you ask us did it, is, does anybody have any questions? Right, find any irregularities or?
Okay. Something. All right. Yeah, Rachel?
I think I I agree with, and I just would add that I think it, one, pushes us to listen more carefully. And two, it is just more civil. Um, I I felt that it was a little easier to just listen. I felt the frustration of the the townspeople who are there to make their comment. Think it's easier when they're on Zoom to make their comment, done, boom. But but when they're standing there and they've waited and they want to make their comment. So I I do think we want to maybe, you know, we might extend it to three minutes. Like, we might, we might want to be able to say, look, we're we're listening here. Um, and we're hoping that, but that they're going to hear each other. Um, and so moderating that with some flexibility so that, but but I liked the saving our comments until the end. So we're just listening.
Two, maybe we can even say two to three minutes. I mean, I found sitting next to Denise with her iPhone there. Um. That pretty soon, people, people got it. Yeah. And, and they were working hard to stay within in a concise way. And it seemed to work well. But maybe if we said a two to three minute piece, and then we really cut it off or what?
I worry about the ambiguity of that.
Okay.
Minute. Sorry. I personally think two minutes was, was adequate.
Yeah.
I think some, which I, I was actually shocked, did quite a bit less than two minutes.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I, I think it's good. I think if we continued on and found out that it wasn't, then we could change it. But there's a big difference between two and three minutes.
There is.
And then people are just thrown on. So it, it makes people be more concise and focused.
I think the other thing that we ran into several times was they're going over their time. They're going over the time. Like it was almost second grade. Like they're going over their time, but they're going, nobody's realizing they're going over their time, but they're realizing how everybody else is going over their own, right? So, so I don't really know how we would address it, but that starts to create, um, an atmosphere of of poor energy, you know, it's a little snarky and.
Badgerism.
A little combative. It, it gets like with the people that are speaking, they develop a, it's not communal. It is not, you know, open to, you know, constructive thought. It starts to become something a little in the weeds. And I, I don't quite know, I don't know the solution to get in front of that. But it, it happens every single time we have one of these meetings.
Denise?
Kathy, I do remember that specific. I won't say who did that, who was flailing around. It's pretty ridiculous. And that was in response to one of our select board talking. And so I think Annalee and I, we did have a conversation about that. And so I think it's really important if it's someone, if some, you know, for instance, the select board was talking about the fifty, like fifty foot. I, I forgot. The frontage, maybe they were presenting that. So I think next time, I think Annalee, you said that, you would then say if someone is presenting, they get more than two minutes. And then that, that takes care of that.
Right. The clarifying things, be really clear, be really clear. Okay. And that, and part of the introduction could be that if there are questions or misinformation, we will try to address that in our deliberation.
And if someone flails around, it's on ta- tape and people see how ridiculous they look. So.
Right. Okay. How about, all right, cool.
I wish we had this during Dollar General. That's what I'll tell you that. Those were, that was painful.
Yeah.
Annalee, you're muted.
Keep my hands away. Um, Kathy's question about, um, you know, this deluge of, um, really important stuff that is coming at us. And we also saw that in, well, this is a whole nother issue. But, um, I mean, there is, we have the opportunity to just say no. Um, we also want to be responsive. We want to be receptive. So let's, can we have a little bit of conversation about that? Because I mean, I, I think that it ties into a number of things. That there's then such a flurry of activity. It also ties into the, the fact that we mentioned a little bit earlier of how can we really have some thoughtful understanding of the nuances of some of these more complex things when they are boom, boom, boom. You know, happening. Here's, here we're meeting on Friday night so we can have a, yeah, a public hearing on Tuesday or something like that or posted. Yeah. So what are your thoughts about that? Um, Denise and then Andrea?
Yeah, once, once again, well, I, I think a big part of that is, is communication. I think that, you know, a lot of us might, I don't know what's going on with a lot of other, other committees. Maybe this is the time to talk, you know, to just briefly talk about CCI.
Yeah, we'll put that at the end.
Okay. But, but anyway, so I, I think that is going to be a vehicle to help with that. Because, you know, if, if there's so many different things going on at once, then maybe, you know, we would have, if everyone knew, we would have, be able to prioritize a little better. Not just us, but the select board, everybody. And I know some of it is just going to happen. I mean, we just have, you know, as Rachel said before, you know, I've said, I'd like to be more proactive. But, you know, we're a combination of proactive and reactive. And some things we just can't help.
Andrew, thank you, Denise.
I was going to say a lot of the, um, meatiness was about, was around the solar, um, issues, which clearly was, um, carefully thought through because we pulled out the small, uh, um, uh, solar in- install, installations from the rest of the, um, uh, the, the regular town meeting. You know, we said that we would, we would spend more time, you know, just, just, uh, really discern what was necessary for it small. And, and that took a lot, a lot, a lot of deliberation, no question. So I think we, um, actually should pat ourselves on the back because that was a huge undertaking. And it got pulled off from something else. And I think, and I hope that it made people in town look, uh, to how serious the planning board is about making good plans. So that was, um, proactive. That was not just reactive. So that was one. The, um, the other, uh, two things were, you know, the, um, the, um, overlay, tourist, tourism overlay, uh, stuff. And that had nothing to do with us. We just, we had to, um, we had to weigh in, uh, for the, that, from the select board. Isn't, isn't that, am I, I'm correct about that, I believe? No?
If we had said no, it wouldn't, it would have gone forward, but it would have gone forward without our endorsement. That would have been very tricky for them. So it really did come, it does come from us. I mean, that's the tricky part of this is that we're the planning board. So they're asking us to make a plan. Um, and, you know, I, I feel like that was the one that, I, I, I think we all need to kind of go back and look at it, make sure that we, we feel really good about all the little, like the, the provision for overriding our formula based bylaw. Uh, that was, that was just sneaked up and bit me in the butt. And I feel like I don't want to get caught off guard like that again. I felt very caught off guard by that.
And that was not initiated.
It was eleven, it wasn't initiated by us, nor, nor did it come to us in a very, I mean, I appreciate, you know, but it didn't come to us in very well hatched. It was kind of hatching. And, uh, we were part of the hatching, but we weren't really part of the hatching. You know, we were, we were getting it in bits and pieces. And so I think that's one of the things where we're, we need to just push the issue more and say, no, we need to be more and more a part of it. And, and we were, I, 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 I don't think it was anything terrible. But I don't think it was great either. And I think we have to keep looking at it so that.
Is that possibly where, especially if someone else is hatching the bylaw and bringing it to us? One of the things I was thinking of is, could we, if we're able to do it, you know, have a quick sort of third party review by, for Cog or a consultant? I mean, um, who, someone else who is gonna take a strong look and just, okay, here's the main points, guys. And, and hopefully that won't slow things up too much. I don't know. That be of help. Rachel's.
I think that's super smart. I think that's one of the reasons why it's nice. I mean, I think back to the days of Pat Smith, quite honestly. You know, Pat would look at it and then say, oh gosh, here are the things that are concerned about. Um, and here's where you want to watch out. This where I saw this in Athol, whatever. Um, so I, I do think we don't have that person per se. Um, Jen's super helpful, but she's also not really our person. She's really the select board person.
Kathy, thank you, Rachel.
Well, I also think, you know, so we had the solar, the frontage, the annual town meeting, which lent itself to the special town meeting, because some, the frontage didn't really pass in, in the annual town meeting. And then we had the tourism overlay. And it was like this massive, it, that's how it felt to me. Like I was building the plane.
Oh, yeah. Fire hose.
So, so that being said, um, you know, the question is, what, did we miss something? Could we miss something? Do we have to have another look? Does another board's, um, agenda need to affect our expeditious response, right? Like, um, the select board or the finance board? So I was looking at some of the other legal notices that have gone in for local towns. And it, it made me kind of think about this. So the tourism overlay, and we think about crafts. So the first thing I'm thinking about is crafty crafts. And then I'm like, no, it's not really that kind of craft, although it could be. It's wine craft, it's beer craft. So it's these kind of crafts. I'm like, hmm, that lends itself into another territory. But then like marijuana growing, that's a craft. The edibles are a craft. This is a whole nother craft. Like, so where does this go? And where, what are we saying? Yep, we're putting our stamp on it. We're agreeing with this. We're approving of this. We're accepting of this. So I think, you know, back to what Rachel said, maybe we need to take another look over at that tourism overlay district and think about what does this mean? And how do we look at the establishments, you know, and the implication of what we're agreeing to? I guess collectively, not just any one thing in particular, you know?
I'll, I'll say as an aside that, um, there have been a number of people who have brought forward those concerns about some of those specifics with the tourism overlay. And so, um, uh, Chris Curtis is, um, going to, has gone through with some questions. Felisa Mead, Lisa's going to look at it more carefully and bring things back to us. So I think specifically about tourism overlay, that might be something that we might have some tweaks for the next town meeting. But in general, back to the whole fire hose thing. And what Rachel was saying earlier of, you know, when someone else brings something to us and it feels, I mean, even doesn't have to be big, doesn't have to be as long as tourism overlay. I mean, um, the municipal frontage or even formula based business. I mean, those are small changes that could have big implications. If we feel like, wow, this could have far reaching effects and we really need to study it quite carefully. Um, we could, as we were just saying, maybe get a third party review to kind of look at it. And maybe, given what the third party review says, we might come back and say, uh, the planning board cannot be for or against it right now. Or I mean, oh, I don't know, you know, I don't know what our verbiage would be. Yeah, sustain or whatever. Yeah, right. Because, uh, we would like to have an opportunity to study it more. May not be the way to make friends and influence people, but maybe it is a way. Yes, Denise.
My understanding with the, um, with the tourism overlay, that it was mostly for the three breweries, for Treehouse, for Berkshire Brew, and also for Powder Hollow. And that, a lot of that language, I think maybe it was just poorly written. But I did ask for clarification because I, I had a conversation with a planning, uh, uh, select board member and said, we are a little concerned about that. And I think the reason why we had to, if we didn't address that, I think it would have, um, prevented Treehouse from moving forward with their plans. If we didn't do that at the special town meeting, it would have hampered their plans until the next town meeting. That's my.
And I, but I don't know how much that would have been a real problem or not. I don't.
I think that, that we also might have shown favoritism because it looks, because I believe the select board approved of entertainment at Treehouse. And I don't know if they had, um, approved entertainment at the other breweries. So I think it was also to sort of make the playing field more even.
Well, again, stepping back maybe from Treehouse versus the breweries, I, although there is the question of, is this lot zoning? That certainly came forward as a question. Um, the whole question of if there's, um, a pretty complex issue, how can we, um, how do we want, I, I, maybe it's just something we think about be, the next time it comes up. I mean, also there's the whole question is, I, I'm seeing some nods with that. Um, the question of, um, I, and I think about this, you know, for myself as well, for all of us. It, there were numerous errors in postings and numbers and maps and, you know, uh, inconsistencies between one section and another. And numerous people who did not catch that. So it certainly is not just us. I mean, the select board, the finance committee, the, you know, town council, the zoning board. I mean, numerous, I'd say in some of those cases, twenty, thirty people who looked at these things and it wasn't till finally at the end, oh, my gosh, the map is wrong. So I don't know what we ourselves can do about more careful reading of these things. But I guess I just want to make note of that. And it was a very strange question. Yeah, Kathy, Sylvester?
Um, I just, going back over the tourism overlay, the rush sounds, from what you're saying, Denise, had to do with, you know, trying to help further the business opportunity of Treehouse without getting in their way. But I, my question would be, could they not have gotten like a year permit for whatever until we had time to digest? And really understand what it was we were approving. I mean, would that have hampered them that much?
I don't know, Kathy, just, that was my understanding. I don't know whether that's the actual truth. And I don't want to miss, I don't want to speak.
Yeah, I hear you. But we could have, if things came up with any of the breweries over the year, we could have approved as they went along until we were able to digest that whole piece. I, I felt like it was drinking out of a fire hose. And I think we missed some things, I suspect.
Rachel?
And the bottom line is, it's going to come to us. I mean, that's where we have to, it's, we have to prep ourselves for what comes to us. So we have to be versed in it. Not the select board. They don't have to be versed in it as much as we do, because we're the ones that are going to meet the disgruntled or the, you know, whatever, the proposals as they come through. So that's important. And that's why at this point, we really have to go through it again, because we really need to be ready. We won't be reactive again.
As we were actually explaining it to the public when I was like, this is not even our proposal, although I guess it really is. But it didn't feel like it was ours. And I ain't prepared to explain it.
Kathy, what's your other? And then Denise?
It's a little bit back to the original question, right? How do we slow it down when we know we're in a moment of like overload? And it, and it, I will tell you, for me personally, it's difficult for me to not be well versed in what it is I'm talking about and presenting and saying yes or no to. I mean, we even, I even got caught in that with the solar vote. And I was like, wait a minute, what does this mean? What? And, and it's, you're on the spot and, and there's this idea that we should know because we're on the planning board, so we should know, right? I actually wasn't that comfortable. And I was thinking, but wait a minute, what does yes mean? And what does no mean? And so I had to stop in the middle of this and ask it, because I didn't feel like I had enough conversation, um, to formulate a good, solid perspective. And I think part of that is be, is due to time and part of it is due to volume. And like, how do we mitigate that? And, and do we mitigate it by saying, no? I know you need planning board, finance board, zoning board. I know you need to have your notification in the paper by two weeks, but we don't have that. We need more time than that. I mean, is it okay for us to be able to do that and maintain a partnership with these boards? Because quite frankly, the hip bones connect to the leg bone and we're all interrelated in, in some fashion.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Good point, Kathy. Yes, Denise?
You know, I, I don't know that we can slow things down, but we can ask to be included in the loop sooner rather than later. I think that's the issue. And I think that we can work towards it.
Yeah. Yeah. And we'll get back to that in just a minute, Denise, because that's good. Um, is, are there any, did, does anybody have any other sort of, uh, their sort of forest rather than the trees, um, thoughts about, about what maybe went well, but also what we can, you know, might want to think about a little bit more for the next one. Cause like Andrew, maybe?
No, I just, I was going to say, I was, um, I was pleased to see that we were open to having an amendment to the solar that increased the amount. Kathy was very happy. I was sitting there here. She was very happy. But, and we, and we, um, didn't fight. We, you know, we, we came up with a solution that we thought was, that was workable. We didn't all, it wasn't unanimous, but we, but we, um, did pass it. And then when the public I'd like you to reconsider, how about this way? I think we all said, you know, or many of us said. I think we all said, you know, or many of us said. Yes, so we, we will listen to, um, the public. We had reasons of our own. We talked about that for long periods of time at, um, at our meeting. But we are open to, um, to making changes if it, uh, if it makes sense to the, um, to the public.
I didn't plant him there either. Although I thought to myself, boy, I should have done that.
But it was perfect, because my biggest concern was that people weren't ready.
Yeah.
And they weren't.
No, and, and it, it's going to be, it's gonna, we're gonna have our first, you know, we won't even have to worry about it. It's all gonna be on Bob.
That's great. Any other, any other thoughts, though? I really appreciate this conversation.
I know, it seems like we're a, an intimate meeting, but obviously other people can be watching our meeting.
Well, yeah.
Always a reminder. Sometimes I think, oh, it's just us, but it's not really.
Right, and, um, we do want to have the public engagement. Okay. Um, thank you very much. Really appreciate. I think this is very helpful. Let's see, old business, um, just a notion, uh, notation, and this is for me a little bit of a stickler, but. As you recall, again, in the scurry of activities beforehand, when, um, the select board came to us with a site plan review application. For the church renovations on seventy-one Main Street, they, um, hadn't really completed the application. And we asked for the condition, um, that they write down their request of the waiver of section fifty-four fifty. They've not yet done that. So we'll get that in the minutes, that that is still pending. Um, and also, uh, jumping to another bullet in old business, um, in our solar installation, our solar bylaws. We do ask for medium and large-scale solar installments to give us an annual review, um, of their operations. It's due forty-five days after January first and, um. Uh, the town has had an enormous amount of difficulty, um, even just tracking down who the current owners are. For the large-scale solar and that in fact, it turns out that, um, as they kind of gave an after-the-fact, uh. Reports for twenty, twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen, I think it was. There, um, is one, um, deficiency, if you will, very minor, very minor. But it's been the same deficiency both years. And so there's a big question, who, who has enforcement responsibility? Um, and everybody's kind of going, woo, they do. So, um, we're trying to check that out, so that'll go in the minutes also. And again, this is almost being proactive. It really is minor relation to the solar installations now, but.
This was the one out on Woolman Hill?
Yes, correct, correct. Um, are, another old business piece is, is kind of twofold, our meeting format for our, um. December first meeting, we are still on a, um, on a sort of a meeting-by-meeting determination if we're gonna be hybrid remote. Or in, in person. Um, there's also a question, I think, of whether or not we will be having additional working meetings. Um, set, uh, December sixth, as Linda mentioned tonight. The, uh, two members of the planning division of Fur Cog are coming to talk about. Kind of the myriad of, um, housing issues that are before towns in Franklin County. Um, and for us, a question of kind of how might we crack that nut with. You know, accessory dwellings and condos and tiny houses. In fact, they're just recently, just this last month, there was an issue with a tiny house and. Um, so, and, and I sent out to you today too, our, our sort of our beginning laundry list of all the things we'd like to do. And so whether or not in November or December, we might want to have an additional sort of working meeting. Not even talking about whether or not it is posted, it's executives, you know, whatever, we won't even worry about that, just another, a different meeting. Um, Chris, Chris Curtis is also asked, he is the point person with this, um, municipal vulnerability project MVP. Grant that Linda was talking so strongly about today. And, um, it does turn out, I've been attending those meetings and it turns out that for the. Uh, uh, green infrastructure as well as MVP, there's a lot of overlay. Between what the grant calls for and what planning board then might need to do with zoning bylaws. And so Chris has asked if he could come and talk with us some about just what some of those overlay things are. That's gonna probably just add more to our questionable to-do list. So I don't know what you feel about Chris. November and December aren't exactly times to, um, throw in a new meeting, but thoughts? Andrea, uh, who is muted? Andrea, who is muted?
Sorry, I have, uh, one thought about the hybrid versus remote, at least. Given that Alex suggested we wait at least one more month while they test. I would say, um, make the December sixth meeting remote. That's what I would, that's what I was.
We had talked about having a, um, kind of a working meeting prior to that for updating the binder. We could also do that in January.
And, and, and I think that, that I think needs to be in person.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. But I think you're, you have a good point, Andrea. Other people thought, thought about that for the December meeting. And certainly Burcog could be.
And the last thing is that, um, uh, that working meeting, uh, to work on our binder, don't we need Jen for that? And how is she doing? And?
She's, she's coming back. She'll be probably coming back a little bit at a time and not full-time. And yeah, she did say bef, before she, you know, went out that, um. To have the working meeting, because the attorney general did approve all the bylaws, so we can make that switch. That's, I don't know, when do you want to have the working meeting? No?
Well, we had talked, I had talked with Jen a while ago, because I, I, maybe she didn't even have her surgery scheduled at that point. And she had said that she could do it on the sixth, but, you know, we could either do it in, then or we could do it in January too.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think the idea of having our next. Our next meeting, whatever it is, if it's the sixth or prior to that, being remote makes sense, as Andrea was saying, if. They're proposing that.
That's why I ask Alex.
Right, okay. So our next meeting, no matter exactly what the date is, will be remote, not hybrid, correct?
Yes.
Got it, okay. And then, um, what do you think about trying to have a meeting? I mean, again, it seems like we need Chris to come to talk about MVP. We need Fur Cog to come and talk about kind of all the housing issues. And then we sit down and look at kind of all of our big list and sort of figure out. You know, what are the things, big and small, that we might want to tackle? Yes, Kathy, Sylvester?
Well, I'd rather have two meetings in November than December if. Is my, if we're gonna have two meetings. It's my opinion, but.
Okay.
For, yeah, just gets worse as the holiday season goes forward.
Right, okay. Any, any other thoughts? I mean. People are thinking, oh, slit my throat at another meeting?
I'd rather do more in November too, just.
Yeah.
I've got, I mean.
Yeah, I would agree.
I'm not available on, on December sixth and already, so.
So, why don't we have one on November fifteenth and that's two weeks from now? And then it's two weeks before the, or December sixth, so it's right in the middle. How does that sound?
I'm on call again, but I can do the same thing I'm doing now. But will you be in person for this or what is that?
I think that, that would be remote, as Alex was. You know, suggesting that it's not. Rachel, did you know? No, you're just.
No, that's good. I mean, as long as, I'm, I'm good either way, but.
Maybe what I'll do is see if, um, Fur Cog is, I mean, it. It may well be that, um. In order for us to really figure out what some of these, um, priorities are, we need Fur Cog and the MVP stuff to be part of our. Uh, memory, our, our work before. So I'll see if they can come earlier on the fifteenth. And we'll figure it out. Okay, cool. Thank you. I think that's helpful. And then in the meantime too, I can, I think some of the things on that list, we certainly found are not necessarily, um. Things that the planning board would necessarily be working on, like a lot of it with, um, updating applications and updating forms and whatnot. I can say, welcome back, Jen. When can we do this? Alrighty, um. Uh, let's see, is, I don't believe there's any other business reasonably anticipated. Or hours prior. Let me have reports of committees and then, and then we can do public comments. Um, Denise, on CCI?
Okay, I'll be very brief. I don't know if you're all aware, but there is a new committee. But it's, it's called Connecting Community Initiative. And it's basically the idea of the committee is better communication, better collaboration and innovation. And what it's going to be, it's, it's an umbrella committee that's going to be over all the other committees and boards, which they're approximately like, I don't know. Twenty-twenty-two and, uh, it has absolutely no power over anybody. All it is, is a committee to convene all the other committees. Not every single one. We have people from, who will be representing multiple committees, so that we have fewer people. And I'm gonna be chair in the committee. Um, which is gonna be a lot of fun, actually, but I think it's gonna be great. I think it's going to, you know, we were talking before about. You know, it's being more proactive instead of reactive. And I know Kathy, you were saying, you know, being inundated with all these different projects at once. This, at least we will know what projects are on the table from every single committee that exists. And it's gonna be probably once a month, I, you know, our first charge is to have the first meeting. To people report on what they're doing, what the projects are, what the timeline is, and, you know, are there any issues? And also to see if there are any, there's overlap, there's overlap of, among a bunch of different committees. So to start making the connections so that I think, you know, to ultimately come up with, um, sort of a, a plan for the town. That is agreeable by mostly everyone. Of course, no one's ever gonna agree, not, everyone's never gonna agree. But, um, because in January, there is a mass. It's, it's, it's a, a conference in Boston and it's basically going around and shopping and talking to people about. Supporting us financially, supporting projects. You can't support a project if you don't know what it is. So the idea is to get sort of a gel, gelled idea of how we're gonna move forward in the town of Deerfield. So that's it. That's the first goal. There'll be multiple goals and a lot of conversation and it's gonna be. Natalie is gonna be the timekeeper.
Is there, are there departments are there too, right? So it's not just committees, but also police, fire.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it is, um, let's see, we'll have the finance, we'll have someone from the finance committee, community center, senior center. Town, common committee, planning board, senior housing, capital improvements, conservation commission, CPC, ZBA. Senior Center Oversight Board, library, recreation, cultural council, energy resources, open space and park and the schools. So they'll all be there and, you know, if we're gonna run it the same way, you know, you've got two minutes to speak. It may be three minutes, maybe some meetings, um, you know, one or two committees will be highlighted because it's more complex, what they have to say. That's essentially what it's going to be. But I think it's really moving forward. And people are pretty excited about it. And I think we'll have a lot better communication and hopefully we won't have everything just dumped on us, because we'll know what to expect.
That's great.
Able to maybe compromise a little bit more on our workload. That's the hope. That's it.
Um, I don't think we have any public here for public comments, do we? Oh, and, Andrew, did you want something?
Uh, I wanted to speak, uh, to the open space committee. I wanted you to know that the survey is, uh, pretty much finalized. Fur Cog, uh, is creating this. It's going to be both a survey monkey and it's going to be, um, on paper for people who don't want to do this online. It will be going into the field in the next, uh, week or so. I believe postcards will be. We're not sure if postcards will be mailed, but somehow, um, people throughout town will be informed. And there will be several places to drop off surveys if you want to do them on paper. And, uh, one other committee member and I are going to be handing them out at the transfer station. Or, or at least reminding people that, um, that this can be done online or hand them a, a piece of paper. So the hope is that the survey will close by about mid-December. And with that information, we'll be able to go forward, um. You know, to approach the state if we wanted to get, uh, funding for something. And allow us to, uh, establish priorities and goals for open space recreation committee.
Wonderful.
Great. All right, um, we did see mail. I thought it was interesting of the mail that we had. Um, they, it has to do primarily with marijuana, retail establishment, solar installation, accessory apartments. Marijuana cultivation, does all stuff that we're working on too, so we're just part of the group. Okay, um, so our next meeting is, uh, November fifteenth, uh, seven PM, remote. Uh, possibly with Fur Cog and MVP and, you know, uh, we can even. We, we will fill the time. That won't be a problem. So, um. That's it. I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent, Denise.
I, I needed to do it for Rachel.
Second, I know. I, I.
All right.
I'm happy for the speed.
All right. Hey, we, we try to keep to it. Okay. And I think all in favor, we can all, uh, put our hands up. There we go, unanimous, Rachel, for the minutes. All right, Alex, thank you for your help tonight.
Alex.